Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. Today's date is March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Mayor Rusty Hike is traveling and will not be here this evening. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll do the invocation with Pastor Paul Gardner, First City Church, fifteen zero eight John F. Kennedy Drive. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, Maker of heaven and earth, as the, as the city council gathers tonight, we are mindful of all the resources and talents and people they represent. And so, thank you for all of that. Thank you for those who serve as leaders on the Bellevue City Council. Thank you for those who serve in the mayor's office. Thank you for those who serve on the police force and in the city administrator's office and in the fire department. Thank you for all those who serve in administrative roles and administrative offices. And thank you for all that you have given the community of Bellevue. As they gather tonight, we thank you for the time and space they have to process what it looks like to help our community grow. And in light of that, Heavenly Father, we, we pray that you would help them think well and consider what it looks like that the city of Bellevue would represent justice and goodness and righteousness, that you would help them think well about what it looks like to help the city of Bellevue prosper and flourish, and that you would help them think well about what to dedicate finances and time and energy and resources to and what not to dedicate time and resources and talent to. And Heavenly Father, as, as we live in a time and a moment when we often emphasize differences and division, help them, help them to listen well to one another. Help, help our community be a community where we listen well to each other, that we may grow and we may more than make a difference in the, in the months and years to come. May we make difference, a difference for many, many, many years to come. And so, may your spirit guide them as they deliberate different decisions tonight. And we pray these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Gardner. We'll continue with call to order and roll call. Susan, please.
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Item number four, thank you Susan. Item number four is Open Meetings Act is posted at the entry to the council chambers. Item number five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of agenda.
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. McCaw and second by Mr. Burns.
I'd like to make amendment to the agenda to move item eighteen, sixteen B and sixteen C in that stated order to right after seven A.
Second.
I have a motion by council member McCaw, second by council member Burns, to amend the agenda by moving item sixteen, or sorry, eighteen, sixteen B, sixteen C in that stated order to right after seven A. Is there any discussion on the, or questions on the amendment? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amendment now.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now on the emotion as, for the approval of the agenda as amended. The motion was by Mr. McCaw, second by Mr. Burns. Is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Can I have a motion? Councilmember Stinson.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Stinson, second by Burns. Is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Preister.
Thank you. I, I just want to comment on the complete streets and say how thorough it was and how complete. And it's got a lot of good information in it. And since it's on consent, I just wanted, this would be my only chance to thank our staff for doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I have a motion by council member Stinson, second by council member Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
We will now move to agenda item number seven, special presentations. Seven A, American Heroes Park Master Plan Update. Would you please state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Cross and I'm the site design leader for HDR. And my, my address is nine nine zero five Katy Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Representing HDR on behalf of the city of Bellevue tonight. Good evening. Like I said, my name is Jennifer Cross. I'm a landscape architect and I have Allison and Gunza as well here tonight. And we wanted to give you a update on the work that we have been doing along with the Public Works Department and the, the parks and as well as with the Community Development Director, Mark Albert, as far as beginning and, and Tammy has also been involved in these, these conversations as well to present a conceptual master plan for American Heroes Park and really create a vision for this park and moving forward and how we might think about phasing and funding this park and that, that overall project. So, in front of you, you have a booklet that is a bit larger, sort of expansive information as well, but wanted to sort of just orient people as far as where this park is at and give you a bit of that sort of context and location as we begin. So, American Heroes Park is located off of Mission Avenue, just east of Old Town Bellevue and is, is approximately a little, little bit around a hundred acres in size. Currently, it has a few amenities out there. It has a lake with a nice trail around it, as well as some existing ball fields and some really nice sustainable parking options, as well as connection to some, some trails, as well as some views over the Missouri River. In this process, as far as developing that conceptual master plan, we did a lot of site investigation, a sort of look at other destination parks. And Bellevue is, is lucky to have a park that has this sort of blank canvas in this size and day and age that's really pretty much unheard of to have a park with that sort of acreage. But it would be considered a destination park in the fact that it, of its size and scale and grander. And then we took a look at sort of other, other amenities and facilities around the twenty-five mile radius that you might be able to draw people to with these sort of park amenities. And typically in a destination park, we like to have people come and you're not spending an hour or two hours here, you're spending maybe four or five or majority of your day in a park space like this. So, when you begin to look at the amenities that are proposed, they're really designed to entice a wide rate of an audience to be able to spend their day here in Bellevue and be able to then go and visit some of the other shops in local vendors as well. So, beginning to think about the idea of what American Heroes Park stands for and what that, that is, and really thinking about it as being a celebration of our community. And, and Bellevue in, in general has a very historic pride with the Air Force Base, the, off at Air Force Base being, being in our, in our home here, but also thinking about all the other people that serve our community in this, in this great, in this great place. So, really begin to thinking about design and for, and how we think about form and order in developing this park space and really thinking about inclusivity. So, how do we make sure that we can celebrate those people of our community, but also do it in a way that it's inclusive and accessible for all? So, I just wanted to sort of give you guys an idea of, of you all of how this park was developed. We, we worked and we had a, a design workshop and a short workshop where we got a group of several people together and looked at programming elements, as well as different options of where, where things we placed on the site. Some were on, on the north, some were on the south, thinking about access and those things. But I decided maybe read a little bit of this excerpt from the sort of conceptual piece here to give you an idea of sort of the, the narrative that was developed by the core team. So, "Celebrating our branches of service and showcasing the pride our community has. For those who keep our freedoms alive is no small task. Each branch of the military is built on the foundation and core values of our country and American Heroes Parks should reflect these deep roots. The conceptual design for American Heroes Park references the core of these services, form, order, prestige and timelessness to create a successful park. The branches of service are high functioning, well-oiled machines. They are known for their craft, efficiencies, strategic pursuits and resilient nature. Creation of a place that exhibits these core elements yet welcomes all life, walks of life is no small order. A park that boasts its pride, offers comfort, showcases its flexibility, celebrates the land we call home. Here we are, free to gather, play, learn, reset and celebrate. This is American Heroes Park. A destination with spaces for large groups, weddings, anniversaries, birthday parties, concerts, or catching your first or hundredth fish. A park where resilient landscapes frame views, offer shade, provides exploration and inquisitive discoveries. Educational outreach, leadership, team building. This is American Heroes Park." So, this was no small task to sort of begin to elevate a space in this way. But, but if any community can do that, I think Bellevue is going to be able to rise to that occasion, especially with the space and location. So, in developing that master plan, in front of you, you, you see the, the sort of areas of importance from what it is today. And really think, and building upon that foundation that you have created in this park space and really elevating that to the next component. So, what we're going to do is I'll walk through each one of these spaces a bit in further depth and, and then at any point in time, please feel free, we can ask questions as well if you have those comments. We looked at, at five kind of key, key areas. The nature and explorative play, so something that's more natural in, in sort of its regard, a little bit more secluded, but still a safe and accessible experience. A lot of children today don't have the opportunity to go and get dirty and, and play in the mud as you or I maybe did growing up. And then we also have the Celebration of Service Plaza and the amenities that go with it. So, this is really the key sort of large active zone of this space. Includes a, the Heroes Hall, as well as the Performance Stage and the Sentinel Observation Tower, along with that event lawn. And then the active zone and play zone. So, this is a bit more sort of traditional in that sort of sense, however, is a very inclusive play element that incorporates some other natural pieces, as well as a fishing jetty and some of those type of things to, to entice a larger group of people. And then on the south end of the, the park, we have a, a new lake pavilion. That'd be a smaller pavilion that begins to offer opportunities for smaller gatherings or even thinking about being able to host fishing and educational opportunities as well. When we're looking at sort of the overall design of the park space, all of these things, right now, the, the images that you'll see begin to sort of represent some of these things graphically. But we wanted to make sure that all of the park elements that you begin to see all have resilient materials. We know maintenance is something that, you know, we, we don't want to have to go back every year and, and repair and, and fix these, these places. So, really thinking about resilient materials, but also materials that, that show sort of that timeless character of a space was, was important as well. We'll start at the north end here, so that, that nature and explorative play, beginning to think about that conceptualization. A lot of the, the spaces here begin to show sort of form and order and rigidity as far as thinking about the, the branches of service and some of those things that they begin to exude when you think about the, the branches of military, maybe what that means to you. But then wanted to offer these opportunities for that playful path and being able to divert from that path and, and find a new course of exploration. So, in that nature play area, it allows us to connect to the trail that goes into the north and into the woods there. We also have done a little bit of stream restoration in this area in thinking about being able to access that water. There's a nice wetland area back in there. I don't know if you've had a chance to walk in there, but it's quite beautiful and really quiet and serene, as well as thinking about areas for children and families to touch the, touch the grasses and the native grasses and walk in between them, as well as thinking about play structures and climbing on logs and picking up and moving them around and really learning what happens to wood as it decomposes. You know, thinking about those opportunities for, for youth and family to explore. Moving a bit further south, we've expanded the parking lot that's there to accommodate what you see in the upper head left-hand corner, which is the Heroes Event Hall. This is a, a event hall that could hold gatherings up to about two hundred or so people, but also something that could be used for, you know, Bellevue Rocks and thinking about having an area for vendors or, or, or larger groups to maybe hold some of those spaces, but also thinking about weddings or anniversaries or some of those events that it could be rentable, but also have some public restrooms on the outside of it. And then behind, you begin to see the, the Sentinel Observation Tower, which is about a hundred feet tall, an observation tower that would have an elevator for access, but then also a staircase that you could ascend as well to get views of, of the river, as well as the park, looking back. Just to the, to the southwest of this space is the Performance Stage. So, this stage would be set up in a way that it would house all of the sort of lights and all the sound and could have sort of those, those rigs and pulley systems on them for thinking about Bellevue Rocks, but also thinking about, you know, maybe there's a, a smaller summer concert series that happens or maybe, maybe there's yoga in the park on Saturdays. And it's set up in a way that you could actually use the, the shaded area that's behind it and is elevated in that way that if you have a smaller group, you could use the area behind on the backside. But for the, some of those larger events, you could use it towards the front. And then that event lawn is set up in such a way that it helps thinking about how we might use that on larger event days and having some of those clear accessible paths to make sure that people are able to move about the space safely when they're not on their picnic blankets or on their lawn chairs. This is a view that begins to show you what that might look like. You know, thinking about a performance in that, in that space. You can see behind that stage, we would have all those branches of service flags as well. All of the spaces would be able to be lit at night. And there's a lot of different things that we could do with that. But really thinking about ha- having the ability to have that ten thousand plus person event here as well in that space. Moving further south along the west side of the lake would be our Activity Zone and Play Area. So, this is the area where we jet out into the lake a little bit and create a bit of a seawall to be able to allow for fishing. There's oversized swings. There's also an inclusive playground that allows, you know, family members to come up to some of those upper deck levels of that custom play structure that begins to mimic the, the Observation Tower. So, maybe if you're not comfortable going into the Observation Tower, you can go into the, the smaller version over here. There's a small zip line that goes from one side to the other hillsides, as well as shelters that offer restrooms here as well. Here's a view of what that looks like if you were to hover above the lake a little bit, so you can begin to see those oversized swings that provide a bit of shade while these trees are still growing and maturing, but really creating a space that, that encompasses that area, as well as offers opportunities in here for potential for hammocks, also DJ mix stations for our youth to be able to plug in their phones and be able to, to play and do some of those things as well. So, really trying to capture a wider demographic in addition to having that seawall where you could go and fish and cast, cast your reel. And you can see that relationship of the, of the Activity Zone to that Performance Stage on the upper right. To the south is the Lake Pavilion. So, this is a smaller pavilion. This would be a pavilion that would house about, could hold about forty to maybe sixty people, depending on how it's set up. So, it's a bit of a smaller venue. This would have a public restroom that would be accessible from the exterior, but also offer some views to that, to the lake. And if you wanted a smaller, more private event, there would be an opportunity to rent this as well. This then allows for access into the water with kayaks or canoes with a accessible boat, boat launch in that sort of regard. And then we would expand parking as well on the southern end. Plantings, you know, you think about parks and green space. Thinking about plantings and the maintenance of plantings and how we do those things is critical to a park's success. We begin to think about areas, high areas where we would have more intense sort of native plantings that have that visual interest and seasonal interest. Other areas where we do a bit more of a, a native short grass prairie mix where they don't have to mow as much. And then really trying to reduce that area that, that we would expect staff to sort of maintain and mow, as well as new lakefront plantings. Infrastructure, everybody, in order to get all the pretty pictures, we have to have all the things in place to, to be able to service all of these amenities. So, thinking about infrastructure, we would have to install sanitary sewer, which includes some new lift stations in order to have those components happen, as well as some additional water main pieces in order to get us up to that Heroes Event Hall up to the north. And so, we've included some of those costs as well in our, in our packet. So, how this would get built, we worked with the core team to sort of develop that priority list. And when we think about those areas of importance, the first phase would include the, the sort of, the activity area with Sentinel Observation Tower, Heroes Event Hall and that Performance Stage and Event Lawn, as well as some of that expanded parking to accommodate those things. And beginning to think about that as far as a, a first phase, it's a large first phase. The other thing that would be included in that area that we didn't really touch on or that I didn't touch on yet was the old Kramer Plant Wall that's there. We would also restore and rehabilitate that as well. So, that's also part of those costs. And this is probably the biggest investment, but also probably has the most bang for your buck as far as thinking about the types of opportunities that you could hold at this park space and drawing some of those things. So, that, that first phase, as far as that area that's outlined in yellow that you see, is just north of a twenty-three million dollar effort as far as that goes and beginning to think about all of those things. And we can break those out and start thinking about how that might get phased and funded in some of those ways. But that's probably the, the bulk of the investment there as far as that larger piece. Phase two is a bit, is a bit smaller in size, expanding that parking along that West Drive. So, thinking about Bellevue Rocks that you don't have to be parking people on the grass and some of those things, but there's also alternative motives for using permeable paving and some of those things to help with water infiltration on site, as well as that Activity Play Zone. And, and those two items are, you know, right now sitting at about four point six million, all-inclusive for the things that we would need for the seawall, as well as the, the shelter and all of the things with restrooms in those facilities as well. The, the phase three, we have it sort of broken out as three A and three B if you wanted to split those up or do those in a different order. You know, the, the nature play, you know, the, and the Lake Pavilion. Those two elements right now are sitting about three, another three point four million dollars as well. So, the, all the, some of the parts there. And then the infrastructure, we've separated those out as a separate cost, which, because if right now, the, the biggest run and the biggest cost for those things is getting it to that Phase One, which is the, the area with the Heroes Event Hall. And so, that's really your longest run to get you there in order to get all those things, which those are about three hundred and fifty thousand. So, that's probably the smallest line item on here until you start breaking things down. But really, there's opportunities out there for, for grants and other sort of funding streams or private-public dollar matches and some of those things. So, beginning to think about how we begin to separate some of those things out to make these more obtainable. There's definitely some other things that we could do to think about. How do we stair-step this in that sort of way? But really trying to outline how this could be implemented in a way that is easily maintainable as far as a future opportunity for, for Bellevue and thinking about inviting the members of our community and beyond to celebrate with us. So, I thank you for all of your time and, and being able to walk through this. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any as well.
Councilmember Welch.
So, I'm not sure if Mr. Risto or you, Ms. Jennifer, need to answer these questions. One of them is, how many parking spots are at this? Because you talked about bringing in ten thousand people and I'm thinking, where, where, where do we put them all? You know, as far as the parking type of thing. And, and that's just a technical question that, you know, it's kind of rattling in my head.
Yeah. So, as far as parking goes, the, the biggest things that we accounted for was making sure that there was adequate parking for all of the, the new event halls and some of those things that are more regular type basis. And we do understand that, and I know that there's several hundred, sort of a couple hundred at least new parking stalls. That number I don't have off the top of my head right now, but we could get that information for you.
I think this is just to, to give us ideas, proposals, kind of give us the direction. And then as we start figuring things out, things get fine-tuned. This is the, the big picture. So, so, Mr. Risto, do we have a kind of an idea that, hey, we look at this and go, yeah, this looks amazing, as to when this starts, how long this takes? Kind of a ETA on this?
Like thirty million, right? Plus thirty million?
Thirty-two.
So, you're, you're talking probably this would be a, a five-plus-year project. So, our goal.
Because our plan would be to do it without raising taxes at, at.
Correct.
No cost to the taxpayers to be able to provide this. That's, that, that's our initial plan.
So, some of the funding, and I think she mentioned too, so grants, we would use our bonding capacity. I mean, we'd have to be creative on this, but, and that's part of the reason why we want to phase it. So, you don't bite off more than you can chew. And it's a big project, but it's a, it's a big vision. So, you're looking towards the end completion. So, if it takes us five to eight years to complete this, but then we would, we would finance our way through this as to what we can afford. So, we haven't got to that, that level. This is kind of the, the vision of what this thing should look like. And then the next part of this project would be if we're all kind of in agreement that this is kind of where we want to march to then is funding it and processing that way.
And I know I've had comments from the people in my ward with regards to this, with regards to the natural grasses and the natural flowers and, you know, some of those types of things. Would they be able to have some input on that? Because there are some people that are very passionate about that.
Yeah. I mean, I think as far as when we move forward with sort of the, 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 zeroing in on design in these areas, I think that there would definitely be opportunities for that public input. You know, right now, this is sort of a, a big, big vision.
This is a, a big concept.
Yep.
So.
But there's definitely opportunities to do that and be able to select those, those plant mixes.
I think, I think it's, it's got some real merit. I think it's a, it's a great idea. I think it's a great project. I know that there's a large need for places for people to have weddings and anniversaries and, you know, on top of the Bellevue Rocks and, and some of those other things. So, I, I, I think, I think it's a great idea. Just wish I could write the check, but unfortunately I can't.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Preister.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. The thing I really liked the best is the nature and explorative play. You go at Christmas and you see the little kids and they open the presents and then they play with the boxes for the next week. And getting kids back into nature, I think, is of great use of this area. I guess seeing that part of it is exciting. And there are some real good examples that the Arbor Day Foundation has down in Nebraska City. We've got the Acorn Acres at Fontana Forest. Those kinds of things are great. When I see all the buildings and I see thirty-one point six million dollars, I think of this building, the police station, the library. Everything combined hasn't cost us that much. And I sit on the budget committee in the past where we had to cut eight million out of a budget and five million out of a budget. And I get a little heartburn thinking of putting this much money in a floodplain. And even that lake during our last flood was overtopped and had water from the river in it. So, I'm just wondering why we would put that much money in buildings and facilities right next to the river.
No, I, I understand that sort of, you know, it is, it is a lot of money and it is a big investment. You know, actually where, where we're sitting at with the elevation, we're actually out of the floodplain, which is why we're able to, to build all the things there. And, you know, part of this maybe question, I'll look to, maybe to Doug Clark or maybe to, to Jim as well, as far as maybe some of that, that investment strategy and some of those things. But, you know, in part of these costs, we also have costs for, you know, inflation. And if this doesn't happen for a few more years, I mean, we have some of those things built in there. But there's also in, in the rate of, of everything that has happened with COVID, we've seen a lot of those costs go up pretty significantly. So, unfortunately, that's part of that, that sign of the time. But, you know, we, we worked with a third-party estimator to do some of those things to understand what those, those costs might be. And as we get tighter into design, some of those might refine a bit as far as how that goes. But I'll, I'll maybe toss the, toss the question over to maybe a couple other in the room as far as their bigger vision for this.
Well, and to answer the question on the floodplain, so that park is not in the floodplain? floodplain? Tammy, you can validate that as our floodplain manager, but it does sit above, I think it's, I can't think what the elevation is.
Yeah, it is.
And there's a um separate mitigation thing that's happening with where the water actually came through. The NRD is working for a gate underneath the Viad or the three-seventy overpass, which is where a lot of the water came back through. So those things are, I think, we're we're not underwater in this project. So we feel pretty confident. And then building estimates at this point, those all become talking points. So do you want a a hundred-foot tower or do you want a fifty-foot tower? And what are the costs? Do you want this this type of building? Right now, it's like just putting a marker on to say that if we do this as projected, that's kind of a rough estimate. It gives us a starting point. So um go big or go home. But I think vision-wise from finance, we we have a lot to work out as how we how we'd pay for this. So we're very cognizant of that without increasing our costs to our taxpayer. But it kind of goes into our vision of a regional park instead of multiple mini-parks. You'd have a a regional park, um Back to the River, you've seen Omaha invest a lot in their Back to the River project as well as Council Bluffs. So these are all kind of going in tune with all of us kind of working in that same direction. It's just the dollar-wise is is concerning. We got to figure that out. So. Does that answer that? I mean, we got a ways to go on that.
We do have a ways to go, but not on table, unattainable. So.
I I just see the large buildings particularly, and some of them, I appreciated the fact that you pointed out that some of them are structurally amenable to less maintenance. But I see the shapes of the roof. I see that it it to me is an architect's dream, but it's a budget nightmare to me. And as I look at another regional park that we're trying to develop and put that in over by the Veterans Home, what are we going to do there and where we're going to have money there? And I'm looking at the big picture. So I don't mean to rain on your parade, but I'm looking from a budget perspective. And even if we got half of it paid, there's still a lot of money. So.
No, I I understand tho- those comments and where you're coming from. And I and for example, the the shape on that roof, um you know, we we did look at, it's something where we could use a metal standing seam roof um as far as how that typically works um on those those Vs. Uh and then it also slopes out and then drains. So um you don't, it wouldn't have to be a fancy uh system. It could be something that's pretty easy to to go up and 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 repair if needed, but is also something that's very durable too. So we are thinking about some of those details to be able to provide something that has that architectural flair, um but also has that traditional sort of materiality that maybe we're used to on normal park structures for maintenance, um to be able to use them in um more of an unconventional way to draw that interest to the eye. So we're trying to think about both of those things um as far as when that goes. But I but I understand where your comments are coming from as far as budget goes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? I'll just make a quick comment. I mean, it looks good. It's a big project. Uh you know, I the city has to go to work now. I mean, everybody's sitting up here. Now we have to get together and decide how to move forward and stuff like that. So if there's no more questions or comments from the council, I want to thank you and Allison for coming out tonight and being here. And thank you for presenting it to us.
All right. Thank you. We're happy to be here.
Thank you.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna have to back up. Thank you so much for coming. We're gonna have to back up. I missed something earlier. Um we need a motion to reconsider five A, which is the approval of the agenda, because there was one amendment that we missed. So I'm gonna ask Councilman McCaw to make a motion to reconsider five A if he's willing to do that. And then I can explain it further if needed.
I'll make the motion to reconsider five A approval of agenda.
I'll second that.
Essentially, what needs to happen is we have to go back and essentially do five A again. And we need to add in the amended agenda that fifteen A is right before eleven C, because pursuant to statute, that item has to come before you approve the ordinance. Um so if you guys vote in favor of reconsidering the agenda, we'll kind of restart those amendments.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by councilmember McCaw, second by councilmember Welch, to reconsider five A, the approval of the agenda.
Yep.
Is there any discussion or comments? Please vote. Okay, so then.
All voting yes, motion carries.
McCaw's gonna make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by councilmember McCaw, second by councilmember Welch, to approve the agenda.
And now um a motion to amend the agenda to move eighteen, sixteen B, and sixteen C in that order to right after seven A and fifteen A to right before eleven A.
Do I have a second? So do I do with the amendment first or the?
Yeah, discussions on the amendment and then a vote.
Okay, so we'll have some discussion on the amendment, which is to move eighteen, sixteen B, and sixteen C in that order stated in that stated order to right after seven A and fifteen A to right before eleven C. We have any discussion or comments?
Right, four eleven.
A?
A.
Okay, sorry, I misread. Eleven A. Do we have any discussion or comments? We're gonna mo- vote on the amendment uh made by Mr. McCaw, seconded by Mr. Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
And now we have a motion by councilmember McCaw, seconded by councilmember Welch, to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Sorry, Councilman uh Burns. Who was the second on that one?
Welch.
Okay. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we will go per amended agenda to item number eighteen, closed session. Councilmember McCaw.
Um I move that the city council go into closed session at this time on agenda item at number eighteen for the protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in the closed session are confidential real estate purchase items and LB eight forty confidential items. The following individuals will will be included during all or some of the closed session. All city council members, Mayor Rusty Hike via the telephone, Jim Risto, Bree Robbins, Annie Matthews, George Achola, Steve Callicut, Rich Severson, Mark Albert.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. McCaw, seconded by councilmember Welch, to go into closed session. Do I move on? Any discussion or comments? Please vote.
I'm gonna do a verbal vote on that one. My computer is messed up here. Uh Councilman Stenson?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman McCaw?
Yes.
Councilman Preister?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The city council has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session is confidential real estate purchases and LB eight forty items for the protection of the public interest. The following individuals will be included in closed session. All councilmembers, city councilmembers, Mayor Rusty Hike via telephone, Jim Risto, Bree Robbins, Annie Matthews, Georgia Cola, Steve Callicut, Rich Severson, and Mark Albert. It is now six thirty-eight P M. And we will be going into closed session in the E O C room upstairs. So anybody here can stay in this room. That's not going to the closed session. You can stay here. Once we're done, we'll come back here and continue with the meeting. Are we ready? Everybody's here? Phil, are you ready? Okay. Okay. Uh it is now seven thirty-five P M. We have a motion by Welch, seconded by the call to come out of closed session. Is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move to item sixteen B. Approve the recommendation for purchase of real estate property using LB eight forty economic development funds and authorize the use of said funding for the purchase agreement for land located within the Highway thirty-four corridor district. Need a motion? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I make a motion that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Welch, seconded by councilmember Stenson. Is there any discussion or questions?
I just wanted to mention that we have a letter from Michelle Andal from the chamber that you all have in your record as well.
Thank you. Let's vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize council president to sign purchase agreement for property located on the northeast corner of Highway seventy-five and Highway thirty-four in the city of Bellevue's extra extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ for eight LB eight forty purposes. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Welch?
I make a motion that we approve item sixteen C.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Welch, seconded by councilmember Stenson. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Elko and Mr. Callicut, thank you very much for coming here to our meeting tonight. Item eight A was under consent agenda. Item nine, uh nothing, uh approved citizen communication, we have none. Item ten, liquor licenses, we have none. Item number eleven, fifteen A. Fifteen A is a resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, request to approve the redevelopment plan for Lot Five, Edward Warren Edition, and Lot and Tax Lot H two located in southwest one quarter, section sixteen of section sixteen, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant is T K C Chandler LLC. General location, West Chandler Road and Highway or in South Thirty-Fifth Street. We we're gonna open up for public hearing. Would you please state your name and address?
Yes, Elizabeth Sevcek, five eight one one Clearwater Drive, Fort Calhoun, Nebraska, six eight zero two three. Um I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I obviously, we've been here a couple of times. So just here if you guys have any additional questions or follow-up questions. Um but otherwise, you know, we're just obviously excited about the opportunity to move forward with this plan and appreciate being able to make it hopefully happen with TIF um funds so that it can go forward. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Preister?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Could I ask you, do you have an idea about the build-out, what your timeframe is looking like?
Yeah, ideally, um they want to start grading and they're still hopeful uh as soon as possible. And they're still hopeful that they could get a um s- uh spec home, a specimen home, and hopefully by the end of the year. But if not, you know, shortly thereafter. And ideally, I they would like to have it all the way built out in three years. So building about ten houses a year until it's filled up.
Okay. And it looks like they're doing the roof on the one existing house, and that's been progressing nicely. So that's a great improvement to the neighborhood just in that one. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody from from the audience want to come up and speak for or against uh resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven? No one coming forward. I'm gonna close public hearing. Do we have a motion? Councilmember McCaw?
Make a motion, we approve fifteen A.
Thank you. I have a motion by councilmember McCaw, seconded by councilmember Preister. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll go back to eleven A. Eleven A, ordinance number four zero seven eight, request to rezone Lot One, F J Fitzgerald subdivision replat two from RS eighty-four and ML two BN for the purpose of a childcare center. Applicant Maria M. Hernandez, general location twenty-five sixteen Chandler Road East. Susan, would you read the ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero seven eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about twenty-five sixteen Chandler Road East, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Mr. Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve eleven A.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Stenson, seconded by councilmember McCaw. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four zero seven nine, request to rezone lots one five four through one hundred ninety-six and outlots F through J, Spring Ridge, being a planning of Tax Lot Twelve, Tax Lot Thirteen A, Lot Two, Bullhawk Edition, and Outlot B, Green Metals, all located in southwest quarter of section twenty-two, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG and BG to RA, BG, and RG eight PS for the purpose of single-family and multi-multi-family residential development. Applicant Orchard Valley, Inc., general business, south, general location, South Twenty-first Street and Gilmore Avenues. Susan, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number four zero seven nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning Ordinance number four zero seven nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Twenty-first Street and Gilmore Lake Road. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero seven nine.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Welch, seconded by councilmember Stenson. Is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Item number eleven B one. Request to preliminary plat lots one fifty-four through one ninety-six and outlots F through J Spring Ridge. I need a motion? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I'll make a motion that we approve eleven B one.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Welch, seconded by councilmember Stenson. Is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Eleven C ordinance four zero eight zero. Request to rezone lots one through thirty-eight and outlot A Chandler Creek being a planning of tax lot H two located in the southwest quarter of section sixteen township fourteen north range thirteen east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska from RS seventy-two to RD sixty for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant TKC Chandler LLC. General location West Chandler Road and South Thirty-Fifth Street. Do I have a motion, councilmember Preister? Oh, Susan, read the ordinance.
Ordinance number four zero eight zero, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about East Chandler Road and South Thirty-Fifth Street. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Councilmember Preister?
Thank you. Mayor Cook?
Who?
I will move to approve item eleven C as just read twice.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Preister, seconded by councilmember McCall. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven C one, request to preliminary plat lots one through thirty-eight and outlot eight Chandler Creek. Need a motion? Councilmember Preister?
Thank you, Mayor Cook. I'll move to approve item eleven C one as just stated.
Second.
I got a motion by councilmember Preister, seconded by councilmember Burns. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven D, ordinance four zero eight one. Request to rezone lots one through one ninety-one and outlots A through H Lakewood West being a planning of the east one half of the southwest one quarter together with the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter all located in section thirty-one township fourteen north range thirteen east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska from AG to RA BG RG twenty PS RG twenty and RS seventy-two for the purpose of commercial multifamily and single-family residential development. Applicant Wutsani Real Estate, Inc., general location, South Fifty-fourth Street and Highway three seventy. Okay. I said RG twenty when it should've been RG fifty. Would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero eight one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fifty-fourth Street and Highway three seventy. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I need a motion? Councilmember Stenson?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero eight one.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Stenson, seconded by councilmember Burns. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Eleven D one, request to preliminary plat lots one through one ninety-one and outlots A through H Lakewood West. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve eleven D one.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Stenson, seconded by councilmember McCall. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve ordinances for public hearing, second reading none. Item thirteen ordinances for introduction, first reading none. Item number fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of the structures, structure at two zero nine Industrial Drive, Bellevue, Nebraska. Mr. Christiansen? I'm gonna open it up for public hearing. We're gonna let our public chief building inspector. Sir, sir, I'll let you talk here in a little bit, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is a small presentation on the property in question. This experienced damage from a flood in twenty nineteen. And we're three years out. In December of twenty twenty, the property's sold and I started the notification process all over again. There's significant damage to all the structural members inside that have rotted out over the years. And this structure is a composite type hut that's an engineered structure. Some of these components will need to be re-engineered prior to the construction of trying to refurbish this structure. There's a building place in the back also that this was the roof that was on it and it suffered damage from the windstorms that we had in December. Took the roof off the entire structure in the rear of the property. There are two buildings located on this property. That's part of the roof from that one also. And that's the rear building that's missing the roof. There's also some nineteen, these buildings were built in nineteen sixty-four. There's some insulation sprayed on the roof of that ceiling that could contain asbestos, but we'll need to have that tested. Opened any questions?
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Christiansen? Councilmember Welch?
Mike, is it two buildings that are coming down or just the one?
It's, both buildings are up for condemnation.
Okay.
Councilmember Preister?
Mike, it was already, already essentially condemned or in condition from the flood. And then there was a sale of the property? And then you, I think you said you had to start the whole process all over.
Yeah, I had notified the original owner and then the property was sold in December of twenty twenty, so I had to start the process over again. So, I did a notification in February of twenty twenty-one. I did a second notification in November of twenty twenty-one. And here more recently, after this public hearing was already set, the owner showed up with some potential plans, but they've got some issues with them.
Okay. So, if we go ahead with this condemnation tonight, could you explain the process? There will be a certain amount of time and kind of a timeframe of what would happen?
Yeah, there'd be a thirty-day timeframe for the owner to take action on it. At that point, if no action was taken, then I would seek bids for the demolition of the properties and bring it back before council for approval.
Thank you.
Mike, when you say he has thirty days to take action, you mean he has thirty days to demolish it after the condemnation?
Correct.
Okay, and if he doesn't demolish it, then we would take action, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Christiansen? Just stay close by, Mike. Sir, you can come up and, you need to sign in. There's a sign-in log up there for your name and address and stuff. And then you'll need to state your name and your address for the council.
Okay, my name is Edgar Andrew. In regard of two oh nine, I'm the owner. I purchased this property on, two oh nine, on December twenty twenty. When the ordinance to rebuild the property, put it back in place. When I got the first notice, we were planning to do the whole renovation and everything. I got a notice from Mike that was back in February, he said. We took terecon in there so we can start cleaning, so we cleaned the whole property. The property wasn't in the position that it is now. It was plywood and dry ones inside complete, so we removed everything as he wanted it. We got another, I had contact, probably was him the one calling me. It was in July or August, somewhere in there. And he said that we need to start fixing the property. I said, I cannot do that right now until March, April. We're in March, April. We submitted plans in October or November, somewhere in there. He, or the board somewhere, they were returning the plans because they said it was problems with the plans. And then we've resumed everything in December. In December fifteen, they wind damage pretty much took the whole thing. In regard, all the asbestos, here's no asbestos on the insulation. On regard, on the first building, he asked for a structural engineer, here's the report. And we decide, after I talked to Mike, when I got the notice, I talked to him because it's not fair that you wanna try to demolish something after we submit all the plans and everything and you waited that long, two years prior, the previous owner, they didn't do anything about it. With moving forward and you're trying to go forward and demolish buildings. The first building is okay and I agree with him after I talked to him on the second of March. Because, all the cost, it's gonna cost me like twenty-five thousand dollars to put it back and restore it, but it cost me thirty thousand dollars to put a new building. So, if I take the first building down and put and rebuild it with a new building, I would not have problem. The one in the back, I have a problem. And the problem is because it's black, the whole thing, it's not combustible and it has eight inches lava top. The roof is flat roof with concrete. The roof that was installed previously flew up. That flew up with the wind on fifteen December. I found out on the twenty-eighth of December, but I was in Mexico. When I came back on the first week of January, we contacted insurance. Insurance didn't show up until the first week of February. By the end of February, I got a check of twenty-five thousand, I mean forty-five thousand dollars to rebuild the roof. I had the check with me, I can show you the check. We were ready to put the roof, flat roof, and we were gonna start on the March second. We submitted the plans and everything and it was rejected. The next day, that's when I got the letter, on the second. And then the day that I got it, I came and talked to him. He asked me for our reports. There are reports and he's the structure for the new building. It's a new, it's another path that is not new, but it's already in use before, prior. There was a concrete path that we're gonna put the building next to it. It's seven foot from the wall. It will be a pre- pre-manufactured building that is metal on the outside, wood on the inside with metal also on the inside. And I have also the plans for pretty much what we want to do. Nine foot on centers with a four foot, every four, every nine foot, we put a four foot two by, four by four, I mean, with a concrete base so we can surround the whole building. And if they allow us to do that, we can do the roof on the top. Something that the back is holding the check, not signing. And we already purchased all the materials for that roof. It's not asbestos. It has a little bit of damage on the back that we can, it's easy to fix also. I mean, it needs to be grinded and re-tuck with a tack point in some places, but it's minor repair. It's not a demolition place. I don't see the point to demo a building that is in a good condition and we're in the process to restore. That's pretty much where I am.
Anybody, Mr. Stenson?
Mike, you said that the wood and everything was deteriorating and everything. Do you feel that that wood is deteriorated enough that you can't fix that building in the condition it's in?
Yeah, and I had that conversation with the gentleman and he's agreed to tear that down. That's what I got out of this conversation. He's gonna tear that front building down.
The first building.
Build a new building there.
Okay, so he said he had cleaned up some of the mess and everything. The pictures you showed are, is that the current, what it currently looks like right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Welch?
So, Mike, it, and correct me if I'm wrong on this. It feels like the gentleman, that you have good intentions, but nothing happens until you reach out to him. He's not proactively reaching out to you, knowing that this property is on the short list, so to speak. Am I, am I correct in understanding that?
Since this hearing was already set, you know, and the plans were presented after the fact that this was set, I wanted to go forward with it to resolve this issue, to either demolish these buildings or to repair them. We're always open to repairing structures. So, what I'm getting out of this is that he would like to tear down the front building and try to refurbish the rear building.
And then I'm curious, if you wanna tear down the front building, why have you not done that up until, before you come to us?
Oh, no. Actually, on that building, we were gonna restore it. And we submitted the plans. We submitted the plans before this ordinance came out, way before. And like I said, the plans were submitted in October. And I talked to him back in July that we were gonna start building and restoring everything in March, April. We are in March, April, and we were gonna start on the roof, March second. And I had the materials, we already purchased the materials. The company's gonna be MGA for that. The general contractor is sold. The HVAC is madera, heating and cooling. And the plumbing is, the plumbing is greena plumbing. So, I had all the trace, everything, everything ready. And it was submitted application, it was written and it was put in inside. So, I mean, it's in the city, so I don't know why, if it was submitted back in, like I said, I think it was late October or the beginning of November.
Okay, because our notes say that the property was cleaned of debris and has been sitting untouched for a year. Is that true?
We clean, we clean everything in March, sometime in March. The first week that was really cold, that's when we cleaned everything.
Are you talking March twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, okay.
Yes, and we remove all the debris. This debris that is right now, it was from the, that it flew from the wind. And we couldn't pick it up right away because we needed the insurance to see it. The insurance went there on the first week of February and it got resolved to the end of February. and it got resolved to the end of February. So it was less than thirty days, and we were ready to start. The prints were submitted and everything.
So the February of twenty, I'm confused, twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two?
Twenty twenty two.
So you cleaned it up, and then you had to wait for the insurance company, and the insurance company took a year?
No, 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 no. We clean everything for the flat, drywall, plywood that it was rotten, insulation that it was rotten back in twenty 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 one. That was in March twenty twenty one. Now, we were, it's a process to get money, to get everything together, so we can uh bu- fix something. It's not, nothing else.
I understand, but did you keep Mike and his department informed during this time?
I talked to Mike, like I said, in August, that we were gonna start, it was late Ju- July or August. That we were gonna start on March, April to rebuilding the building, both of them. And like I said, we had everything ready, and we submitted the prints in November twenty twenty one. It was late October, November, let's say, first week of November. I'm not sure when, when it was.
So is it the south building that's ne- needing to be demolished or the other building?
We were gonna re- rebuild both of them at the beginning, after I talked to Mike. Uh, and I put numbers together, it cost me almost the same amount of money to fix an old building, to put a new building.
But which building was it we're talking about?
The north building.
The north building?
The south building is all brick, not combustible, concrete, pretty much.
Okay, but there, there were some plans that were s- that were submitted, but they're structurally incomplete to bring the building into code compliance, and then there's been no response. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so the plans that were submitted in November or thereof were incomplete, and they were dated to the wrong current code also. So we reached out to the architect several times to try to get them to uh redraw the prints. And sometime in that, between that, the roof came off the the secondary building, so then we needed plans for the roof also, and this drug out until here uh, just a couple weeks ago. So I kept this on the agenda to resolve it.
Okay, so if we vote in favor of this, does this force him to take down both of them or get you plans submitted or?
You would have to amend, amend it to the north building only. If if he's gonna repair it, or or we uh table this for thirty days and see where we're at.
Ree?
The documents that you received tonight, Mike, did you just receive those?
I just.
Yes.
That's the first time you've seen those?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my suggestion is if, so if we vote in favor of the order, or the resolution is written, then both buildings have to come down, and he would be per- not permitted to do any work on either building. Uh, the other option, which is the option that I would prefer over an amendment, is to table this for thirty days. Have him demo the, the one building that you're agreeing to demo within the next thirty days. And then come back and discuss the second part of this resolution at that time, um, and have that conversation. That would be my preference versus amending the resolution.
Councilmember Preister.
Thank you. If we do delay it for thirty days, can you tell me what your actions will be?
Well, I would like to, if we're gonna do that, I would like to do one thing in in favor. Let me do the roof on the back building. And I do the, and I demolish that one in the next thirty days.
You, you're giving us your word that within thirty days you would demolish the one building completely?
The best on my, my hands, yeah.
Okay, it would all be cleaned up and to
Yeah.
Code satisfaction, and you would have, a- and we don't have the opportunity this quickly to assess the papers you have turned in, but that you would work to get that building refurbished to all codes, not just the old codes, then is that what you're saying?
Yeah, actually, on on the, those papers, when I talked to Mike, he requests those papers on March second. So we got those la- this week, actually. It was like a last week, I think, this one? Last week.
And that may not be complete, or I heard Mike say that some of the things were to the prior code. We adopted a new code in this interim. So it may not be what you thought it was. You're willing to work with Mike to make sure you meet all of the codes and get this progressing within those thirty days. Is that the word you're giving?
Yes.
Okay, I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
No, 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 no.
I want them to be yours.
I would do that, and I would try the best that I can in my hands. Uh, I cannot push the architect to do everything, he's not gonna do it. But I would try the best I can, even even, even if I had to change the architect. Uh, but what I'm asking is also, let me do the roof on the back during this time also, because we already had the material, we had a, and it's leaking. It's all concrete, but it's leaking.
Mike, can I, Brady, you want to say?
My question was for Mike as well. Mike, is he able to, if we table this for thirty days, um, so April fifteenth-ish? Is he able to obtain the demo permits and also any permitting to complete his roof within that timeframe?
I wouldn't be able to have an answer for you in thirty days, whether we get it down or not, with an asbestos report that's gonna have to be done on the front building. Uh, sometimes that can take two or three weeks.
Prior to demo?
Prior to demo, correct. If he gets on it right away, we could be in 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 play in about three weeks.
But he could obtain the permitting for the roof on the back building?
I can review the plans that were submitted here recently that were inadequate for the front building for the roof structure on the back and issue a permit for the roof on the back.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, do you feel comfortable with the thirty day?
Yeah, as long as we're moving forward.
I think a lot of it is, like Councilmember Preister said, get the one building knocked down, which you said might be an asbestos uh study or look into, and clean it up. I mean, if, if he gives you the plans to redo the roof and you okay it, it, we would be happy at that point.
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Councilmember McCaw?
Um, so on that back building, the south building, I I guess I wanna hear that it's, it's repairable.
Yeah, it's a block building. Um, it had a cement roof on it. I assumed that it started leaking years ago, so someone built a roof over the top of the, the cement roof. Uh, what he wants to go back with, is my understanding, is a insulation base with a membrane roof over the entire cement roof.
Okay. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you. Mike, if, if we did table this thirty days, would that give uh him until April fifteenth to have the one building demolished? And then from there you would, if it wasn't, then I guess at this point it'd be both buildings unless it was amended, but uh, so thirty days, so it'd be from today to fifteenth. And then you would find, you would put bids out for someone to come in, and then with that?
There wouldn't be any bids. At thirty days, we should know exactly where he's at in establishing a new roof on the rear building and demolishing the front building. If all that is underway, we'll be in good shape.
Okay.
Okay? If not, then we'll have to move forward with the condemnation order.
I guess I, uh, I don't, I think we're just, I don't know, I kinda think we're prolonging it. I don't know if it, I, I feel like we'd just be extending it out and we could be back in the same situation. I don't mean to seem harsh, I hear you. Um, but I think that we, we were essentially, essentially just like, we're gonna, it's gonna come back. If there is nothing done, I get it that we're trusting and it's good faith effort. But I feel like we're just really prolonging it, and even if we approve this today, or is that, I mean, you'd still have time. So I guess I just wanna make sure that you, you still plan on demolishing the one building, but you wanna refurbish the other one. So it's really no difference. We're just asking you to come back in thirty days, so even if we approve this or amended it, so you know, it wasn't both structures, we'd still be in the same position, just not prolonging it, is that? Mike, I hope I'm being clear on my timeframe.
We've done this in the past, and I'm comfortable with going thirty days to just try to get this
To table it.
In the right direction, and if in thirty days it doesn't, we'll bring it back before council, and you can condemn it at that point.
And then that would extend it another thirty days?
Correct.
So.
At that point, if it weren't down in the sixty days, then I would take bids and we'd tear it down.
Okay.
I'm just gonna see if anybody else would like to speak on the subject, on the show cause hearing on the condemnation of a structure at two zero nine Industrial Drive. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and talk? Okay, any other comments by the uh Councilmember Stenson?
I just wanna say, uh, what, kinda reiterate what Ree said, if we don't table this, Ree, you said he was not allowed to touch it if we go through with this tonight, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and I was having issues popping up the resolution on my computer, so I apologize for that. Um, so there's really three options. One, you can approve the resolution as stated, which would order right now the demolition of both buildings, and he would have thirty days to demolish both buildings. And if he didn't, then we would go back in after that thirty days and demolish both buildings and assess the cost to him. Option number one. Option number two is you can table the entire thing until the April nineteenth meeting. If you tabled everything until April nineteenth, it would give him an additional thirty plus days to essentially demo that front building, which he's giving his word that he's going to do, and then work on the permitting for the roof. Um, essentially, if he comes back in April nineteenth and those items are not done, then he would be reconsidering the resolution to demo both buildings. It's kinda giving um him a grace period to say that he's gonna do what he's, is saying he's gonna do. The third option, now that I have this in front of me, is to attempt to amend the resolution to separate it out by buildings, um, where today you're ordering the demo of the front building. And then if he doesn't complete that, then after thirty days, then we would demo it. But then the second building would remain in place, and it would allow him the permitting items. And then Mike can readdress it if it's not done correctly. So there's kinda three options. To me, the cleanest way is to table the entire resolution until April nineteenth and give him the opportunity to complete the work. And then if he comes in on April nineteenth and it's not done, then I think you have your answers, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Preister?
And and I appreciate that explanation, and that would likely be my preference, or one of the main reasons. Uh, Mike and the department has invested a lot of time already over the last three years in this property. And so I don't want him to have to put any more of his valuable time into it. And if you give your word that you're gonna do it, you seem an honorable man, and I would wanna trust you that you would follow through.
It's not just the city that one that has invested money. I have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars invested in that property. So it's not just the city, and if you table that property, it's worth nothing.
Okay.
You throw my pocket out of the west, too.
Sure. Councilmember Stenson?
Sir, are we ready for a motion on this, or?
Yes.
Well, I gotta call, does anybody else wanna speak on this subject? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close public hearing.
And then we actually go to fourteen A one.
Yes, so fourteen A one is resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, condemning the structures located at two zero nine Industrial Drive, Bellevue, Nebraska. Uh, Councilmember McCaw?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this decision on fourteen A, fourteen A one until April nineteenth meeting.
I have a second by Stenson. Is there any further discussion or questions?
Just to clarify, the motion was to table fourteen A one, which is the resolution, until April nineteenth?
Any other discussion or seeing none, please vote.
Councilmember Burns is yours going through?
Oh, no, nothing's actually popped up, hold on. There it is.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Item number fourteen B, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of thirteen zero two Main Street, Bellevue, six eight zero zero five, Mr. Christensen?
Okay, uh, again, I have a short clip I'd like to show you, um, and I'll fill in from there. This property sustained damage in July from the windstorms that we had. Um, I just wanna point this out, this is in current condition right now. Well, a week and a half ago, that's when these clips were made, and that deck remains the same uh, to date at this point in time, with those blocks stacked up underneath it. That's in violation of our city ordinances in chapter fifteen for porches. And that's current state. This is directly after the windstorm, just shows the trees of how they collapsed on the house and the damage that was done. This is a week and a half ago, as the structure sat uh through the winter with the tarp blown off and any moisture that we had going into that portion of the building. As we go a little closer, you can see a paddle fan hanging down inside, um, basically electrical wires, et cetera, that were exposed to the elements. The NEC does not allow uh Romex to be exposed to water and have to be removed after that. There's a little mold and mildew growing in, in, inside of there also from the moisture that has accumulated over, over the winter months. The structure was built back in nineteen hundred, and has been added on several times over the years. So currently, I was out of town last week, and they took it upon themselves to repair the roof on this without benefit of any permits. And I don't have a picture of it. As it sits now, they've recited it, they've repaired the roof, and I sent an inspector down yesterday, and they were drywalling inside without any uh certifications of mitigation of mold or mildew or anything inside.
Okay, I, I will open it up for a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on the show cause hearing for the proposed condemnation of thirteen oh two Main Street? Sir, would you please come up here and sign in? Just take your time, and once you complete that, uh, then state your name and your address for us.
My name is Peter Grayson. We live at eight sixteen Driftwood Drive. I'm the owner of the house. I did have a contractor that was doing the work on the house. He told me he was licensed. We went down there to uh bought the permit. He never did, had one pulled. Uh, he did finish the roof, um, uh, the drywall, the sheets were up. I have pictures of what it looks like now. I don't know if you wanna see them or not. I don't know if you wanna see them, okay. I don't know if you do, but, okay. We should have it done in a month. Hopefully we get the permits. I got a engineer looking at it Monday, four o'clock.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mike, when was this property put into this, did you, was, did you say it's from a windstorm?
July.
So I'm, yeah, I'm chatting with Mr. Christensen, so bear with me, so.
Yeah, the windstorms that we had, the high winds in July of twenty twenty one, that's when the, the trees came down. Um, they cleaned up the property, you know, as far as the trees and debris right away, put a tarp on the roof. Uh, the notice was sent out immediately after the windstorm, and a second notice was sent out in mid- out in mid-August, but the property sat that way into the winter months when the tarp deteriorated and blew off, and then remained that way for the rest of the winter.
Okay, so, the homeowner, is there a reason that you kind of waited till this week to get this done?
Well, we were having problems with the permit. I'm sorry, we had, we had some problems with getting the permit, and we had different people come out trying to get the permit because of the insurance reason, they had a problem getting that. And even for me, I had a problem, because I usually deal with Farm Bureau, and they do insure me for doing the roof.
So you had problems getting the permit from the city, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
When were permits attempted to be received by the city? When did you apply for permits?
The contractor that I did have doing it?
Yes. When's the first time that permits were attempted to be applied for with the city?
Right after we cleaned up the trees.
So in July-ish?
But even I tried to, but, you know, I get the license, but I couldn't get the insurance that was required to get the permit.
So you didn't meet the requirements for the permit? Is that a fair statement?
Pardon me?
So you didn't meet the requirements for the permit? Is that a fair statement?
Right.
Okay. I have a question for Mike. Mike, since permits were not hold to do the roof and the drywall, what would need to happen at this point? Would that all have to be redone so the proper inspections and permitting was complete?
I mean, everything that they've done, they've recited it, there's a vapor bearer that belongs behind there, there's, there was asbestos sighting that, that's irrelevant, basically, as long as they don't just damage it or destroy it during the process. But some of the work's gonna have to be undone to make sure it's done correctly. The drywall's gonna have to be removed inside, there's gonna have to be a certified mold mitigation company come in and make sure it's all cleaned up. Otherwise, we move on down the road, the house gets sold or somebody rents it, and people aren't feeling very well.
And prior to this last week, when you were made aware of work being completed inside the house, and other than the tree cleanup, have you been notified, has your office been notified of their attempts to get permitting in the past?
There was an attempt, approximately two or three weeks after the windstorm to obtain permits, and no one was licensed or qualified.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
So Mike, is this one that you, would you recommend that we delay this one as well, or you recommend that we take action on it, or what, what, I mean, you're the one that's in the field, so.
I mean, he has to be willing to obtain a certified licensed contractor that's, that's willing to come into this after the fact and take out a permit and reveal everything that needs to be seen and do the proper mitigation of the mold, go from there.
And are you willing to do that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So based on Mike, based on that, what, what's your recommendation?
Well, I haven't had very good luck with this particular property thus far, but if he's willing to give his word here tonight and move forward and try to make this right, we can give him thirty days.
Okay. This is a public hearing, is anybody, anyone else would like to come up here and talk? Okay. Bree?
I was just gonna say, we have an extra week between city council meetings on this one. I'm just talking out, or thinking out loud here, but what are your thoughts potentially of continuing this one until April fifth, just to kind of have a check sooner than later to ensure that he has actually obtained the permitting by that date? And if he's obtained it, then we can always do another motion to table it later, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I'm good with April fifth.
Okay. And that would give him ample time to obtain that appropriate permitting and licensed contractor, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, that's just my suggestion.
I would have a question, gentlemen. Sir, would you agree to that?
Yes, sir.
That's-
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Preister?
I would ask the follow-up, you would agree to do it, do you have the finances and are you in a position to do it? Because what I hear, the drywall's got to come out, we saw in the pictures, the electrical work, that didn't meet code, it wasn't enclosed as it needs to be, so some of the work's gonna have to be redone. This is gonna be an expensive job.
Yes, sir.
Financially, tell me what position you're in to do that.
I can handle it.
So you are asking me to trust you?
Pardon me, sir?
You're asking us to trust you, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Welch?
Oh, I was ready to make a motion.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? Any councilmembers have any other questions or comments? I will close public hearing, and I will take a motion.
Oh, go to-
I'm sorry, fourteen B one. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero nine condemning the structures located at thirteen oh two Main Street, Bellevue, six eight zero zero five. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Welch?
I make a motion that we table this to our April fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Is there anything else I need to add to that?
I have a motion by Councilmember Welch, second by Councilmember Preister, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Don't fail me.
I won't.
Now we will go to item sixteen, current business, sixteen D, approve and authorize the council president to sign the contract with DPS LLC for the Stonecroft Park improvements in the amount not to exceed the base bid of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and nine cents, and an alternate of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents, for a total of two hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen E.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Welch, second by Councilmember Stenson, is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the council president to sign the contract with Creative Sites LLC for the Faulkland Park Improvement Project in the amount not to exceed one thou, one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, plus potential city initiated change of orders up to ten percent, eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. Councilmember Preister?
Thank you, Mayor Cook. I will make a motion to approve item sixteen E as you just read, and that does have a nice ring to it.
We have a, a motion made by Councilmember Preister, second by Councilmember McCall, any discussion, questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number sixteen F, approve and authorize the city, the council president to sign the agreement between the city of Bellevue and Alfred Benish and Company in the amount not to exceed one hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars for construction engineering services for the city of Bellevue's twenty twenty-two concrete projects. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Stenson?
Make motion, we approve sixteen F.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second that.
I have a, a motion by Councilmember Stenson, second by Councilmember Welch, is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the council president to sign the agreement between city of Bellevue and Alfred Benish and Company in the amount not to exceed eighty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars for construction engineering services for the city of Bellevue's Greg Road Improvement Project. Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen G.
Second.
I have a motion, motion by Councilmember Welch, second by Councilmember McCall, is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize the council president to sign maintenance agreement number five with Nebraska Department of Transportation and DOT for reimbursement in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen H.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Stenson, I, I have a motion by Councilmember Burns, second by Councilmember Stenson, is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen I, approve and authorize the council president to sign a interlocal cooperation agreement with Sarpy County to provide animal control services in an amount, in a total amount of three hundred and seventy-one dollars and one hundred and, three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and a hundred and thirty-four dollars, it's a two-year contract. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Preister?
Thank you, Mayor Cook. I will move to approve item sixteen I.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Preister, second by Councilmember Welch, is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Preister?
I will, I'll just make a comment first, that when the mayor's out of town, the acting, the pres, the council president is acting as the mayor during that time, so he is the acting mayor currently, and it is an appropriate title. But in, in this case, I did get some information from the Humane Society today, and I sent that out to everybody about some of the activities that they said they had been doing, so just wanted to make that comment. I think they're doing a, a great job, and it's nice that we have them rather than having to do it internally and do it ourselves, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chief Paris said he wanted to take this on our own. I concur, wholeheartedly.
They do a good job?
They do, and we don't, we don't want to take it. I just give one, I don't know that it turns on, so.
I concur wholeheartedly. There was actually legislative action last year that I testified against to not allow cities to contract with Humane Society, and that would be catastrophic for us as a department. The cost was estimated at like one point five million that we would have to spend to get up to speed on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administrative reports, comments, comments must be limited to items on the current report. Monthly reports are given at the first council meeting of each month. February and March reports will be attached to the April fifth council packet. Item number nineteen, adjournment, do I have a motion? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Cook. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Welch, second by Councilmember Preister, is there any discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, end of our meeting.